Hello. I'm going to call the meeting to order because people have to leave and we have to go to work and stuff. So I apologize for being a few minutes late. Calling the South Kingstown School Committee meeting to order at 8:34 on June 26th. So we're going to open the meeting with a quick roll call. Dave Palazzetti.
Here.
Kate Massenanti, I'm here. Bob Littlefield.
Here.
Chip McGar.
Here.
Terry Lynch.
Here.
Jim Manny.
Present.
Michael Pedraza.
Here.
Great, thank you. We have a few folks on vacation, that's fine. And I'm going to just go quickly into public correspondence. I forwarded the team an email from our Sustainability Committee regarding solar panels on the building. So I just wanted to, I told her we would just quickly discuss it. We do not have plans to have solar power, excuse me, solar panels on the building as part of this project. However, the building is solar ready. So at any point in time, if the school/town decides they want to have solar panels installed, it's ready to go. And I see that as being kind of a capital improvement project later, but it is not in the scope of this current plan, but it can be later. So from there, I believe that was all the public correspondence I received that was forwarded to me. We did receive requests to put financials on our website, and that is in the works with Left Field. So other than that, we'll move on to business item number three, discussion, public forum update. I believe, I mean, this is going back a few weeks, it's been a while since we've met. So this agenda item, the public forum was wonderful, it was pretty reasonably attended, had great conversation. There was a lot of questions kind of back and forth. It was a really, really kind of robust discussion about where we are at. No issues, to my knowledge, came up, and everybody seemed to be happy with the responses they got. And then there will be, I'm assuming there will be future public forums as we move along and get to next stages. So that's going to bring us to new business item number four, discussion, a status update regarding the design development submissions and approvals. So we have Kate from Left Field.
Good morning, everyone. Kate Turner with Left Field. Our design development package has been submitted to RIDE. We have reached out several times to schedule a follow-up meeting. They have not yet gotten to provide any comments back to us at this time, and we're continuing to reach out to establish weekly meetings moving forward. We do have a critical timeline with our DD approvals and our early package approvals
Does anybody have any questions on that topic for Left Field?
So how much has that slowed you down from moving into CD, or are the architects still rocking and rolling?
The architects are still moving, it's just the formal submission process through
Anybody else? That brings us to a very exciting next topic, the design refinement of the South Kingstown High School floor plans and exterior renderings. I had a little sneak peek on Monday, along with Michael and the rest of our design team, and I'm pretty impressed with what I'm seeing as the renderings start to evolve, we'll say. And so we'll let Kathy take it from here.
Sorry about that. Good morning, Kathy Elthorpe with SLAM. We'll start with renderings today, and then we'll step over to the floor plans after that. So for those of you who might have been in the public meetings a week or two ago, these are the renderings that were shared then, and we've been continuing to work on them. A couple key items to talk about would be some of the value engineering exterior updates that we've been doing to help get our project back on track financially, as well as, from a design standpoint, we think it's just, we've been making the building better, not, the value engineering actually always moves us in a much more positive direction than people seem to think when we start talking about it. So this is a view of the entire facade from School Street, which I don't think we've ever shown you an entire facade before. So that three-story academic tower is still what you see over on the left-hand side, the centerpiece of the building, also three stories, has the main office and nurses' offices on the first floor, and then academics above. And then as we move to the right, that longer, two-story bar is the auditorium with the entrance to the auditorium, and then the music spaces behind the auditorium space are farthest to the right.
Kathy, can you, is it possible for you to like make that fit the whole screen, or is that going to get wonky on us?
Presentation mode doesn't work.
Yeah, but you know what, I can go to PowerPoint. Wait a minute, let me put a PowerPoint up. I'll do it this.
You're going to have to stop sharing and reshare then.
Oh, I will?
Yeah, it's only sharing blue beam.
Oh, one second.
So AirTame, yeah. AirTame does not like presentation mode for some reason, it always freezes, so let's stop sharing this one. Come back to AirTame. And then we're going to go back in again. All right. Six, three, five, seven, seven. Share screen in. We're just going to go with entire screen this time, and you can go back.
Sorry for the disruption, but it just is an impressive building, so I want to make sure we see it well.
Yeah, let's see if presentation.
That's much better. Thank you.
All right.
All right, so now with a bigger mode. But again, this is, now you're being able to see the entire breadth of what the view will be from School Street, and if you look all the way over to the left-hand side, you can see the edge of the Hazard Building, which of course has been one of our reference points for the coloration of the building and, you know, just some of the geometries that we've been working with to make sure it has a reference back to that important building in the community.
So as far as where we're standing, if we were actually standing in front of it, so that is School Street with the little.
With the little car.
As Michael pointed out, the Mini Cooper, not the Tesla, the Mini Cooper. So we're kind of standing in the neighbor's yard, looking across the street.
We're kind of up in the air, we're a drone.
We're on their roof, okay, got it.
Yeah, we are over the neighbor's across the street, up in the air a little bit, because we're at a vantage point where we're looking sort of right smack at the middle of the second floor from this area. So again, that's the bus loop, where the bus is shown, this is the side of the building that's most public to people driving by, but it's the side where the bus loop will go. Parents will be on the backside, which we'll see in a minute, when they're dropping off or picking up students.
Before we move on, does anybody have any comments, questions about what we're looking at right here? Just something to point out, there's kind of like a little spot where there's an overhang underneath the glass tower. There was, we got into kind of a robust discussion when this was first shown as far as like places where bikes and e-bikes, because e-bikes are all over the place now, where people can like kind of park their bikes. So there's discussion about where to put that. That was kind of one of the locations and ideas, but if anybody has questions and comments as we're absorbing what we're looking at here, the team's happy to answer.
One of the areas that did change, just to point that out to you, there was a lot of curtain wall along the right side of the three-story academic tower. When we went back and looked at that, we felt that it was going to be better to change that to some more punched vertical windows, because right behind that wall is our Learning Commons on all three floors, and that gives us the opportunity to have whiteboards and other things along that area for students' use when they're allowed out into those learning spaces. So I will go to the next one, let's see if this works. So this is the same view you've seen before, it's the, again, front entry rotated around again. We do still have the courtyard in the front with a seating wall, so that if there's an event going on in the auditorium, if people want to filter out into that space, it has a little serpentine walk, it'll have some benches in it, and, you know, some nice vegetation that stays low to the ground, not things that grow up tall, because we do want to make sure that we have really good sightlines out of that first floor, which is where the main office is, and you really want to have vision to that, everything that's going on in your front yard. And then the auditorium entrance, which, the theater entrance, which we have been maintaining throughout this.
And I think the other comment that was shared when we very first saw this, that strip of grass, there will be trees there?
Yes, we took the trees out for this rendering so that we could see the building, but as you see the trees that are in front of the academic tower, that entire strip of lawn has trees and other vegetation in it, which has been worked out with the, through planning and zoning and other meetings that have gone on. So it does look a little naked right there, but. And then the next renderings that we start bringing forward, we'll put the trees back in. Oh, thank you. We'll look at, oh no, it doesn't, unfortunately red doesn't show up on this, yeah. It was a good try. The next set of renderings will have the trees, and we kind of make the trees really light and see-through, but you get a better sense of how much vegetation is really going to be in front of the building as we move forward. Let me continue around the building, maybe? Why does this want to stop sharing? I don't know why it wants to stop sharing. Let's see if this will work. Here we go. All right, so now we've gone around to the back, and we're, again, a different view than what you've seen before, where we're looking really straight on, as if we were out in the fields, looking straight back through the parking at the back entrance, which in some ways is the main entrance to students, because this is where most of them are going to come and go from, unless they're coming on the bus. Again, the Hazard Building off to the right-hand side gives you some sense of scale of how big that building is compared to the new building. New building really isn't a whole lot bigger when you look at the peak of the roof of the building that's already there on campus. Not too many things have changed since the last time you would have seen this rendering, with the exception perhaps of a little bit of change to the roof of, I wonder if I can point to anything? Ooh. Oh, I can point to things. This is the upper glass area of the, sorry, get that off, of the gym. We've made a couple of changes to reduce some of the glazing up there, not in any significant way that changes how you experience that space, but it was one of the places where we were able to make some reductions in cost. Any questions about this side?
Is that frosted glass or clear in the gymnasium?
No, it's not frosted glass.
Is it, is it just clear glass?
It's clear glass, but it'll be treated so that it's not heat-absorbing and whatnot, but it's, actually, some of that might end up a bit frick.
I'm more worried about the setting sun. I don't know if the athletic director cares, but.
We will make sure, we're doing daylight studies into the building, so we can see, we can track the sun, how it moves across the ground.
Yeah, and put a little shade across the top or something.
Inside, yeah.
Okay.
Yep. So let's keep going around. So we've just moved a little bit farther over.
Kathy, can you go back one second?
Sure, I think so, yes.
I just want to point out that there was discussion about, at the town council's school committee joint meeting, there was a question about a path leading from the high school to the Hazard Building to make sure it stays connected for the students, and I believe it was shared that there is one planned, it's just not showing in this rendering.
I'm trying to get, we're going to, we have one that starts, it's going to start right there at the base of the tower, and it will come straight across, and it intersects the building right about where that arrow is. So that has been added to the site plan already, it's just not in this rendering yet. Oops, wrongly. And so that you can see the, again, see the entire length of the building from this side, which I don't think is a view that we've shared out before. We're feeling pretty happy with the way it's turned out, so.
I'm really enjoying it. If you don't mind talking a little bit about the CTE courtyard space, to give a, just a perspective of that it's actually there, and why there's a wall there and all that kinds of stuff.
So this entrance point here, and behind this piece of wall, there's actually a courtyard, there's no roof back in there. That's so that the student, and we had a couple of really good meetings with them last week, there's a large garage door that opens up, and that becomes their outdoor workspace. At one point, we had it more transparent, some of that brick wall wasn't there, but in talking with teachers and faculty, and also in looking at how much of it you'd be able to see from the parking lot, we felt it was better to put that brick wall piece in, make it a little more protected, a little less where somebody might say, "Oh, they're doing something cool over there after hours, I might want to go check it out." So, but it is still an access point, there's not a gate or anything that's out here at this front walk, because that's an access point coming out of the building. But there's a fence that screens it off just to the inside, we'll be able to see it in the plan, so that they can leave things outside and secure them. But we had some really, really good conversations last week with the CTE program directors, and we're working out specifics on how to lay out those spaces and how they're going to use their outdoor space. So that seems to have worked out quite well. Any questions? All right, I'm going to try and figure out how to, how do I get back to, sorry.
Need my technical assistance. All right, because the other ones are, yeah.
Blue beam.
So we did share the entire screen, so we don't have to go out of it.
Yep.
There we go. We can at least zoom in this way, a little bit. So blue beam's the one that doesn't let you do presentation mode.
All right, so now we're back inside the building on the first floor. I think you guys are probably pretty familiar with where everything is at this point, but I'll point out a few of the things that have been adjusted as we've moved along. So the backside of the building, you may or may not remember, these corridors didn't used to line up, and now they do, because we've readjusted a little bit of how this auditorium lays out, which is really nice for being able to get scenery and any things that they're doing as a joint venture with the construction tech area, to be able to bring scenery down, pop right through these doors and onto the platform. So in previous versions, they had to make a wiggle and another wiggle to get out there and get on stage. That, cleaning that up has really helped with our circulation, and it's helped with the exterior shape and form of the building as well. So there's not a lot of things that are different. Here is that courtyard we were just talking about, outdoors, there's a large overhead door, there will be a fence line right here. So we have an egress point coming out that we can't impede with another gate, but they will be able to use this entire area and secure it in order to leave things outside. Any questions on the first floor? I'm happy to go over anything you want, but I don't want to take up time that we don't need to take up. So let me go to the second floor. Position this a little bit better. The second floor, we've also continued to do some refinements primarily in the area of the balcony in the back of the auditorium. We've been able to structure that in a way that, since our early bid packages have gone out, so steel and foundations and everything is out on the street, it's in bidding, Tony, you've got people working on that at this point. We were able to find a way to structure that balcony in a way that really saved us some significant amount of steel construction dollars. But the balcony is still sloped, it's still tiered, it still functions exactly the way that everybody expected it to. The library is still that sort of orangey salmon color space, with the overlook into the Dining Commons, and on the opposite side is primarily the arts, wet arts and dry arts space, and of course, our academic tower, which is consistent on all three floors. Let's go to the next one. Maybe, maybe not. There we go. Pretend I didn't draw that there. I don't do good without a mouse. Again, we're, there's nothing different to the geometry than what you saw before, but we've had a lot of conversation, the orangey salmon color, or orangey colors here are primarily the science spaces, and the two reddish colors to the other side are CTE spaces, but those are the ones that are heavily connected to your sciences. We've had a lot of conversation with all of the academic people that are involved in those, Chip's been wonderful in spearheading those conversations and being a liaison back to them after the fact, and there's been refinements, and there continue to be some refinements in those areas to make sure that the program spaces are supporting the academics that you guys have in place and the academics that you see in the future. Any questions?
Yeah, can you just go back to the second floor?
Sure, probably. There we go.
Just a note that we, and I had sent some drawings out end of last week, basically, it was the beginning of this week, sorry, that with the first purple room on the left as we're looking at it, that's where the kiln is going to be. They just asked for supervisory reasons if that could be lowered to a half-wall so they could see into it.
The kiln, oh, the room with the kiln?
Yeah, instead of like blocking it off, because it's not going to be easy to supervise.
We will check on that.
Yeah, so I sent those things out, just wanted to make note of it, and then they had a suggestion for where to then put the screens, so just take a look at those, please.
Sure.
I think I sent them to Brittany, and, yep, so just make sure that, I just didn't want those to go unnoticed.
Nope, anything that you've been sending, we greatly appreciate, because it's been really helpful in our refinements.
Must be fun venting that thing through the third floor.
Sorry?
It must be fun venting the kilt through the third floor.
It's, it's, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, I can, I can see your point on the half-wall, they might have to do like glass or something.
Yeah, we'll have to check and see.
Yeah, fire coat on that's kind of a little rough.
Yep.
I think it's awesome. I did have a question on the first floor, just because I didn't understand one space, but it has just gotten better, better. How many seats are in the upper balcony, or in the balcony now?
Oh, boy, I don't know. I have to.
Fifty, it looks like fifty.
At one point, it was 156, I don't, I don't remember now, because they've reshaped the, I'll call it the bowl on the first floor. You'll see, it's been more refined, we're really working with our acquisition as well as the seating layout vendor to refine that space. So I would just be guessing, and I prefer not to guess in public.
I think the key, though, is that the numbers, the total number has not been reduced at all.
Oh, no.
No, okay, good.
And we have all the required companion seating and everything for ADA access.
So my question was, the green space to the left of the gym, is that like a dance studio, or is that, that big open gym? It says physical education, but I'm trying to figure out. The green one.
This one?
That's.
This is, this is fitness center out back here.
So what's the one to the left?
This is a big storage room.
Oh, it's storage, okay.
Because we have quite a bit of equipment, including wrestling mats, the practice mats that will end up being stored in there.
Always, can always use storage.
Oh, yeah.
So the training room is where?
Training room is over here, this one with the casework in it.
Okay, awesome, thanks.
Would we do some of that space to, oh, they have an area for. Add an area for washing machine and storage, so we cut that space down to make that smaller to increase some of the storage space.
And there's been refinements on the locker room spaces, again, after some recent conversations with Terry and his group to refine those. So I think everything's really, from our perspective, everybody's, everything's falling into place, and pretty soon we're going to have, as I've said before, a variety of interior finishes and things to be, to be bringing forward, and start having that level of conversation about what's the inside really look like.
Yeah, it's really tight, I mean, what's your, what's your net to gross?
This building is 153,000 square feet, and I couldn't tell you what my net to gross is.
Yeah, but I mean, just looks, looking at it.
It is very, so if you look at the.
There's not a lot of wasted space, there's not a lot of corridor space.
The circulation, you know, Mark and the team have really done a lot of work to use every inch of it that we can as either a gathering space that's got multiple uses, or it's academic program space. It's really worked out quite nicely.
Good job.
All right.
Anybody else have any questions or comments? All right, perfect. Thank you so much. That will bring us to new business item six, discussion, it's listed discussion action, but does not necessarily action, pre-construction site enabling updates.
So essentially, as I think was sort of alluded to, we have a series of early bid packages out on the street. Our precondition survey bids are in, we'll be scoping those next week, and then our, what we call site enabling, which is essentially the temporary drop-off roadway and the site setup for the first day of school, those bids are due tomorrow. Phil just gave us an addendum for that that we'll address through scope reviews next week. So those two early groupings of packages are intended for that July, I don't remember the date, town council meeting for approval.
Yeah, so it's, July 14th is town council, and we need to, I think the 10th would be our next building committee meeting, that we would address the results at here.
And then concrete, steel, elevator, early release electrical packages and site work are also out on the street for bids. Currently, those due dates range from the 9th to about the 15th, I think. There's a little bit ebb and flow to that relative to the marketplace and what subcontractors need to ensure we, you know, receive competitive pricing, but all those are sort of on track, again, as intended for the next town council meeting, which I think is August. I, okay, I have 11th written down, so that's good, I'm glad you corrected me.
So I say, we want to make sure that we document that it's the 12th, because that's a Tuesday, which is off-normal, because the 11th in Rhode Island is a holiday.
Well, there you go, that's right. And then there are also a series of small, what I call general conditions or general requirements bid packages out for things like trailers and temporary toilets and dumpsters and rodent control, those kind of things that are also out on the street. There is a small trailer that's necessary for safety. I think that's it.
Anybody have any questions for Tony? August 11th, so the meeting he was referring to would be the August 12th, yep. All right. First day of school logistics, do we have an update on that? I just kind of put that on as a placeholder.
We don't have, we, I just sent a follow-up, Gilbane is working on a schedule for the temporary roadway work, and just highlighting those key dates that that work will be completed. But as of right now, if we hit the dates that we've advertised so far, the first day of school, we should have the temporary roadway in, and at least a majority of the directly adjacent fencing installed, and the building on temporary power. So that is, that is still the goal. If there's any other complications that arise, we'll make sure we're keeping everybody abreast of that.
Awesome. We just had a school committee meeting, and when you, I walk in from Hazard parking lot across, and you can see where people have been and marked the roads, and it's kind of exciting to see.
It is, it's kind of fun, you know, when you get to this stage and everything is planning and planning, to get on-site and start to draw, you know, spray paint lines on, temporary pole's going to go here, we're going to have the guidelines over here, and when you start to get to the actual planning, it gets very exciting.
I was just telling Phil when we were walking in, I woke up at 1 o'clock this morning, and I think I've been up since, but all of my brain just immediately went into like the future, seeing all this happening, and because it's been a long journey in general, it's been a long journey these past couple of years, but longer than that has been a long journey, so it's definitely exciting, so I thank you guys for that. Our next item eight, environmental engineering update.
Yeah, pretty quick update, we have ground penetrating radar being done to mark out the utilities for those additional soil borings that is happening today. Tomorrow will be just a one-day operation to drill those holes. Tomorrow will be just a one-day operation to drill those holes, and then about a week to a week and a half, we'll get the results of the additional soil borings.
And that drilling is on the, like the driveway that goes up to the back lot? It's not in the hazard field, right?
It's not in the hazard field, and it's not on the actual drive. It's kind of tucked into that courtyard a little bit more.
Okay.
Yeah, you know where that little courtyard is, where the wood shop is? It's kind of tucked back in that area a little bit more. So, they don't need to close down the road. I was in communication with Michael and Chip just to say, be aware, there may be some limited disruption as they're mobilizing their rigs, but we don't anticipate needing to close the road.
Awesome. Do we have any questions on any of that?
Town council?
Okay, we just got confirmation that the August meeting is the 12th, the Tuesday.
Thank you.
All right. So, that brings us to new business item number nine, which is really just a discussion, a start-off discussion for a list of current South Kingston High School memorials to be preserved and relocated to the new high school. We've talked about it kind of in general over time, but as we get closer and closer to what we're doing, we need to really, and people are starting to kind of chatter in the community about it because there are, there are external, kind of I'll say a monument. We have some plaques, and we have, of course, a veterans memorial auditorium, so we have all of that. And a lot of folks might come to the town council to talk about some of these things, and so we want to make sure that we have a plan and make sure the town council knows the plan, and that we have a list, because a lot of them are students who have passed, you know, in the past. And we want to just make sure we honor their memory and the memorials in a way, and that we don't miss any, because I know it's, I mean, decades worth. So, Chip, do you have anything you want to talk about?
Yeah, so I think it's, I think there's two parts to it. So, the more detailed one, I think, comes to putting a committee together at the school and because there's all this institutional knowledge of the place, so, and things that are inside the building that aren't going to be fenced off on hazard field, I think we have time to gather all that together and do that thoughtfully and make sure that we pull things over. But the trickier one is if there's anything in the hazard field, that's what I think is the other part that I was referring to. So, I think that's something that we have to find out more quickly because once that's fenced off, that's going to be an area that we're looking to take everything down. So, like there were, it has nothing to do with memorials, but there's like two apple trees that we're looking to potentially preserve that are right next to the building, like are those things that we could move? But that's not memorial-based. But I guess my question is, is, what's the best process for us figuring out if there's anything that was planted on the field that would need to be pulled over?
I think.
I mean, in short time, because we're in the summer at this point, yeah.
Yes, if you can identify any important trees, and especially if there's a name plaque or a memorial plaque that's associated with it, that would be good to know. If it's dedicated for removal, depending on the size, it can be difficult to transplant trees, depending on how big they are, how mature they are. But we, I think first, we need to identify if they're scheduled for demolition, or if they're scheduled for removal, and if they're not, making sure that they're properly protected.
Right, because outside of the hazard field right now, my understanding is that we would have time for everything else. It's that area that's going to be fenced off that we wouldn't have, that we do not have much time.
Right. So, again, I would just work to identify what those are, because there are trees that are planned to be removed and trees that are not planned to be removed. So, depending on where they are is going to determine whether, if it's where the building footprint's going to be, we don't have much of a choice. It has to come out. We can bring in an arborist to determine whether it can be transplanted or not, or if it just is replaced in kind and a memorial plaque is then dedicated to it, you know, we can establish that. Anything that's inside of the building or directly attached to the building or not part of this initial phase of enabling work, we would like to get an inventory of. SLAM will then determine where in the building it'll be relocated to, but they should, it really should be thoughtfully planned. So, if we can get that inventory list as soon as you guys return from school, starting that process would be helpful.
I want to do that right, because if we rush that, that's where we're going to make a mistake. So, I think the fall would be the time to do that, that part, but we need to figure out the hazard field part, if there's anything at all.
So, I wonder if we can, in the next couple weeks or so, if a handful of folks can maybe just do a walk-around, specifically like the hazard playground. Clearly, that is the Mattie Fund statue. Kids built that with the mosaics, and we want to make sure we can preserve what we can preserve. But there's also, I noticed while we were standing there talking about it on Tuesday with some school committee members, there's some bricks along where it used to be the entrance to the playground. There's a bunch of bricks that I think people donated for the playground, and they've kind of been grown over a little, and so I wonder if that's something, again, just to look at, acknowledge, and figure out what to do about it. But as long as we keep the conversation public.
Yes. Bricks are easy. If there's memorial bricks, that is very easy to remove and stockpile and somehow implement into the final site layout. That is done all of the time. We also need to determine the feasibility of moving certain elements. I know that particular statue is very fragile, and we want to be as cautious as we can with planning to relocate items and making sure that it is in a condition that it can be relocated.
Kate, has anybody reached out to Rick Soravo to find out, like, his feelings on, does he want to keep that stuff?
Not yet. The conversation just popped up in the past, like two days, when all of a sudden, they're starting to mark up the area, and now it's like, oh, we have this. And I know we really want, especially with that one in particular, we want to be pretty cognizant of what, A, what happens to it, and B, how it's memorialized in going further. But yes, are they still local? Do you know?
I think so. I'm not totally sure.
Okay, so we'll just make sure that they're connected with. Do you want?
Sure, I just want to make sure it's in a public forum, is that it's our recommendation that that memorial structure would not survive any relocation. And actually trying to remove those tiles and maybe reuse a portion of them is probably also not achievable. A number of them are deteriorating, they are breaking on a daily basis. So, our recommendation is that it should be dismantled as best it can be, but it would not be relocated, and any other structure then would be of new.
It's great information, and it goes back to the point of reaching out to the Mattie Fund and Mr. Soravo to have a conversation of what that might look like going forward to make sure that his son's memorialized properly, so.
And at a minimum, I think photo documentation should absolutely be done, and if the memorial's not able to be relocated or preserved, photo documentation and some sort of memorial plaque that shows photos of the monument may be achievable as well.
Great. But again, a discussion to continue, especially over the next couple of weeks pertaining to the hazard area in general.
So, I just have one plea, is we can certainly wait until everybody comes back to make final decisions about things on the inside that need to be preserved and put somewhere. But if there's a way to get some sort of quantity of how much there might be and like how much wall space, it's really important as we start really defining the inside of the building, to, at least in general, know, is it little, is it a lot? Are there big things, are there small things? So, I don't know if it's possible for, and we could walk through the building. It's not like you guys have to make the lists and hand it to us if you point out.
No, I think that's where that's going to be tricky, is there's a lot of things that might not seem like they are. So, I think we're going to have to wait until people return in the fall. I don't want to make a mistake with that. I think it's too important to get it right. The hazard field and the playground, I think that stuff we can do right now. We can get the word out on that, but I think the rest of it really does need to wait. You get, you know, since 1952, the building's been around, and so there's lots and lots of stuff there that I just, I don't want to make a mistake. It's going to create much more of a situation for all of us if we are to forget something. So, I think.
No, I definitely agree. I'm just wondering how much, I'll say, wall space do we need to preserve not doing something else to it to be able to display things? I'm just trying to get a general.
Yeah, I guess my answer is I'm not going to know until we're able to do that, yeah.
All right, then we'll just have to do whatever we do.
No, I think that this brings up a good subject in terms of relations with our members of our community, that there is the chance, as Chip said, that we make a mistake, and then that raises raw emotion, because there was a lot of raw emotion that went into these memorials at the time. And I think it's just important that we are, that we're careful and deliberate and that we do as much as we can to invite input from the community. There's only so much institutional knowledge that we all have. There's other people in the community that also have that institutional knowledge, and we want to make sure that we're not disenfranchising them.
Chip, is there any kind of alumni association or Facebook page or something that would, sorry. Sorry if that's a sore subject.
I laughed because that was, yes, we were part of alumni association. Half this committee was part of alumni association. So, the short answer is sort of, but kind of to Bob's point, there are folks, and I can name people off the top of my head who, they're not in our schools and they're not on our team, but they're in our community, and every day on Facebook, they share memories from 1952, 54, 69, like this constant, and I think we just make a list of people who we think can really contribute, and they may come in and say, hey, did you know that this actually over here was such and such? And they'll, the community remembers everything. So, we just, I think we just need to be thoughtful about it. And to, yes, Kathy, to your point, there are certain things that you need upfront, and that I think a quick walk-through, the building, you can get a good idea, and then the little things that we might stumble upon, we'll just make arrangements as needed after that, so. But definitely, it's going to be, I'm sure other communities are equally as passionate about their past, but as we all know, South Kingston has long memories, and our past is really the foundation of everything we do, so. All right. Does anybody have any other questions or updates or anything they would like to share? All right, so then that brings us to public comment. We have a community member out there, but I think, are you all set? You can come talk. You're welcome.
Hi, I'm Dorothy Hill, the chair of the Bicycle Pedestrian Advisory Committee, and just one quick little thing in watching the rendering, looking at the renderings, if the team could maybe include in, as well as the little Mini Cooper and people walking, people biking, and people with scooters. And I do appreciate and like that you guys are considering some kind of infrastructure, exterior infrastructure for people to put their bikes and their e-bikes, something that's safe and maybe protected from the weather. So, I like what I'm hearing about that, and I like hearing about the paths between the building that you're looking into, ways that students and faculty can walk between the buildings. And so, anything that can be done to make it safer for students to walk and bike to school is appreciated. Thank you.
Sure thing. Thank you. All right. So, that brings us to our final agenda item, discussion action, next school building committee meeting, date, time, and so on. So, that brings us to July 10th at 8:30. I already have it in my calendar, so that is our next school building committee meeting here. And then, as Kate, as you said, we have the town council on the 4th that we'll be planning for on the 10th, so. Unless anybody has anything they want to add about our meeting, next meeting? All right, then I will take a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? All right, then our meeting will adjourn at 9:19. Thank you.